See, hit on that.
And I mean...
I thought, because this just said online.
I was at work, so I was catching it as I was.
Start recording.
So I'm sure there were things that I...
I just went off of my screen.
But I'm like...
Now, recording, and so we have a recording on.
That's what might hurt while I was watching.
So we're live.
I've been watching.
We're live.
Okay, so the emails will pop up over here.
Yep. You might want to try, somebody sent an email to alexpublichearing@gmail.com to make sure that's working. So we're on right now.
We're on right now, yep. We're just not sure if the email works or not.
Yeah, it's... This isn't... Oh, I... Remember I talked about that tail issue?
Who am I making this up to, Alex, babe?
Alex, uh...
Alex Public Hearing.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ron.
alexpublichearing@gmail.com.
I want to send that off if you can sit down. Yeah. I want to get on you, but I got it back. Looking at this stuff from, uh, this accountant at number four. I knew that Redwood, we were at a deficit. I was unaware that, uh, Route 12 sewer, we also...
I can't hear you.
Looking at this stuff from, uh, this accountant at number five, before, rather. I knew Redwood Sewer, we were in the red house. Didn't realize that, uh, Route 12 sewer was also in the red.
I'm not sure. Did you, you had an email, Ron?
Uh, I just heard a noise.
Should I have a number over there next to him?
No. Just says inbox.
Yep.
Okay.
There it is.
I'll leave that up.
Pass.
And I got one from Sandy also.
Okay. Okay. On our clock, we're late here.
Mm-hmm.
We'll call the town board meeting to order. This is a meeting of 5:26 at 5:00 PM. Everybody stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The minutes I just talked to Jessie, she's gonna provide us with paper copies of these minutes for each one of us, uh, so we can start reviewing those, and we probably got a few of them to go through.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Some of them are short, so they're not too bad.
Yep. Uh, motion to pay the bills.
I vote for them. I haven't seen any.
Motion by John, second.
I'm gonna give it to John.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, none. At 5:15, we'll do the public hearing, uh, on our, on our webpage. It has the phone numbers and the email address to submit questions for the public hearing. Uh, that address is, what is that address? The email address, Ron?
Is alexpublichearing, alexpublichearing@gmail.com. And also, you should be able to read it. If anybody is streaming, they should be able to see it right there also.
And there's two phone numbers that you can call and or text, which are 315-778-5665 and 315-489-1613.
Now, I know that's a microphone right there, right?
Yeah.
Is there a second one?
Yeah, there's, there's two.
Does that mean it just, they pick up very well from what...
Yeah, I was gonna say, I listened to it today, and it picks up excellent.
I just wondered where the second one was, as far as, I mean, if somebody calls in here, they'll definitely hear it.
Uh, so the first item on the agenda, we'll go through the agenda, and then we'll stop at 5:15 to do the public hearing, is Save the River Support Resolution. You'll see that as the first paper underneath the, uh, agenda in front of you, and that is Save the River is applying for a grant to work on the septic pollution prevention program to target rural and environmental justice area communities to provide workshops, tools, and resources for updating septic systems. So they've, uh, they're just looking for our support and our resolution that we support them in their application to this grant. And if I get the board's permission to do that, then I'll sign a support letter. Anybody have any other questions? There's a couple pages there that talk exactly about what the, this grant application's about. I think it's similar to what happened in Black Lake a couple years ago, where the Black Lake community got a grant, and it let people apply for monies to upgrade and replace their septic systems. So this is being headed up by Save the River.
You'll make your motion, you go ahead and...
Motion by Sandy, second.
I'll look at them.
Second by John. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, none. Seek a resolution for negative debt, Goose Bay Rent, Rob.
Yeah, you did that last meeting, but I brought in the pretty resolution. Jesse certified it, uh, so we're all set for that.
So that's all you need, is you need to have her certify it.
Have her certify the resolution.
Okay.
And advertise in the environmental notice bulletin, so we're all set for that.
The third thing is the dock configuration. Uh, there was everybody, I sent everybody an email a week or so ago about the four, five, or six different possibilities. I think that most everybody got back to me and agreed that number six was the one we liked the best. Uh, that's also the one that, when Rob and I talked with the ready commission people, that we got the impression that they, we told them that we liked that, and they seemed okay with that, right?
Yeah, I put our response to their comments in writing. I emailed that into them last week, and we'll await to have confirmation of that. We're also, we're also having a pre-permitting meeting that I thought was today mistakenly. Well, it was supposed to be today, and they put it back till next Tuesday. Uh, and that'll be a conference call. That'll be a conference call next week.
Okay, so I thought it would be good for us to pass a motion tonight to, that we all agree on that configuration number six, just so they know the town has looked at it, and that's what the town's supporting, okay?
Yep.
Anybody have any questions on that? So I need a motion to accept alternate number six for the dock configuration for the Goose Bay Ready Project.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ron. Second by Mike. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, none. Butterfield Lake Town Dock Rehabilitation Project. I think, uh, that's a picture. You guys, I got a picture there for you. The, uh, it doesn't show, I mean, all the docks, everything's been totally redone. Uh, the guys at the Highway Barn stained the pavilion that you see there. I believe it's like, it's like a black stain. I went out and looked at it to take these pictures. It looks very nice. Any, uh, anybody have any discussion on that?
I don't know what it looked like before, but it looks beautiful right now.
Yeah.
Nice job. I just wanted to, well, there were a couple different things on social media about, uh, one of them being that only two people worked on it, or three people, two or three people, something like that. Actually, all nine of the Highway guys worked on it. And it's a total of 482 and a half hours of labor, and that worked out to be slightly more than $10,000 of labor costs, and to do the work on the dock itself. I'm not saying that it was a good project as well, you know, done, I just kind of, and it was $20,000 worth of material.
I looked at the, I went over there and watched them while they were working on this. The one day, the two days that I was over there, there was probably at least four or five guys that were working in, out back doing the sandblasting. Uh, and this was, this was well before we had the furlough, so all the guys were working over there. And, uh, they were all chipping in. They all were working on it, you know, they had protective gear on, and everything looked very proper. And as you can see, they've done a nice job. Uh, you know, our hopes was that this would be done by Memorial Day weekend, and they, they beat that schedule, uh, and they got it done. And I had a lot of people from Butterfield Lake that called while docks were out that wanted to know when or what was being done to them, and I explained, and now I've had people call that are very happy that it's done, and it's in, and it looks great. So I want to say thank you to the Highway guys, all the guys at the Highway Barn that worked on that. Uh, County Highway, all manual distribution and the clerk manual distribution. I had some board members talk to me about having these manuals. Nicole ordered those. We got those manuals, and I've distributed to the people. If anybody else wants more manuals, just talk to me or talk to Nicole, and we'll get you copies of those. Highway Department, uh, Mike told me at the end of last week that the Highway guys, which there's three guys that are still working, uh, would be taking vacation this week and not working. Um, I asked them about the, uh, the week around 4th of July. I believe it's usually the week after 4th of July that they take off for vacation, I think. Hasn't it been in the past? And I asked about if they were gonna be doing that, and he said they would be doing that also. So they're basically, we're looking at two vacation weeks. They're using vacation time. They're using their accruals, and, uh, if we need somebody, he's lined it up with a couple of them that they would come in, whether we need to have somebody do something at the brush pit, or if we have a tree fall down or whatever, there's people that would be on call, just so everybody knows what's going on, or anybody asks what they're doing. Next one, number seven, is the solar digital speed sign trailer. Um, you'll see a picture that I gave you all. This is what Jay and Jamie made. They did a great job. Uh, this, this is now installed at, uh, at Wellsley, what's that called? Westminster Park Road is where we have that one installed. We have the other one installed at Dingman Point Road. The, I think that we're probably all gonna agree that we should take the one that's permanently mounted at Dingman Point Road, and we should put that on a trailer and make that movable also. Uh, this was kind of a test deal, this first one they did, and it came out great, and it's, uh, being used over there, and the other one's at Dingman Point.
Yeah, see, they got a chain and a padlock.
Yeah.
So everybody makes up for that.
Uh, the only other thing I want to say publicly, uh, for Pam to write and for people to listen to, is that the town bought these signs to move them around to different roads where they're needed. Uh, so feel free to talk to us and tell us when you, if somebody has an area or a neighborhood or a road that they'd like to have, uh, have this sign there for a while. Um, and please just get ahold of a town board member or whatever, and we'll, uh, we'll put you on the list. Streetscape, selected committee person for the town. We talked about this a couple months ago. Uh, I got asked about this by some of the people on the committee. I think they're getting geared up to have a meeting, um, as soon as some of this stuff lets us have a meeting, and, uh, so we have to choose somebody to be on that committee. Anybody have any thoughts?
I had a suggestion. Excuse me. As far as Roger Reeffen Snyder.
Yep.
I mentioned his name last time, and I think, uh, told people to think about it. I think he'd do an excellent job. Got a great combination of skills.
Yep. Anybody else have any names?
Is this the one that we talked about before, that you had recommended Butch?
Yeah, we didn't make a decision that night.
Right. But I wondered why you didn't recommend Butch this time.
I just did, I just...
Oh, is that his name?
Yeah.
But I just, oh, sorry. Cause I'm like, I only know him as Butch, and I thought last time that he would be a great idea.
His real name is Roger.
Oh, sorry about that, Butch. I didn't know. Um, did we ever find out, is it okay, because he has, he doesn't have to live in the town, correct?
Doesn't have to live in the town. It's really, the choice is the town boards, is the way it was explained to me.
Okay. All right. Cause I know that was just the only concern last time. I think he'd be a great choice.
Is the board, board okay with making that decision tonight?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to appoint Roger Reeffen Snyder as the, uh, town representative on that committee.
Motion by Ron to appoint Roger on that committee. Need a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Sandy. Any further discussion?
Wasn't there supposed to be like two?
No.
No, just one?
There's one, there's one for the town and one for the village.
Okay, all right. That's where the two comes from.
And there's two board members.
Yes, okay.
And two board members.
Right.
Ron, how do you spell his last name?
It's like, it's like Reif Snyder.
It's like R-E-I-F-E-N-S-N-Y-D-E-R.
Okay. Hello?
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, none. Resolution for the burned trailer thing up in this local law.
Public hearing. Mr. Supervisor, public hearings, public hearing.
It's 15:00.
I got somebody on the phone that wants to speak.
I was just gonna say, a public hearing? I think, I think we're doing the public hearing for the burned up trailer, which we're reading right now too, but no, this is the public hearing for the, for the water rates. So the process here is, you need a motion to open the public hearing, right, Bob?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing?
Motion by Sandy. Do we need a second?
I'll second it.
Second by John. Public hearing is open. We have any texts or...
I've got Marilyn Kristin. How do you say that? There you go, Marilyn's on. Okay, there you go, Marilyn.
Think you're kinda like Butch.
You are on speaker, go ahead.
Okay, all right. To our good board, and I'm glad you're on there, Sandy. I have a question. Why are the sides of our town road not mowed? I understand there's street...
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
We're not there.
This is, we're at the public hearing for the water rate, so we gotta stick, keep you to that topic right now.
So we have to close that public hearing and go to privilege of the floor, where she can talk to us.
Well, then I'll have to call you back, right?
Yep.
Or you want me to call you back when we get there?
Yeah, cause I don't know, I'm not there. I wouldn't know what to call.
I'll call you back when we get to that section.
Okay, will you take my number down, or you got it?
I got it, I just wrote it down.
Okay, all right. I have a couple things on there, so.
Okay.
And I do wanna put it out there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
So the public hearing for the water rates is open. Anybody have any comments or any discussion?
Outside?
Not on my phone. Ronnie's got the email.
I, I don't have anything.
I have my longstanding questions as to why, well, a bunch of them. Is, I don't buy into all the various different rates. I think that there's something, it's not exactly kosher about that. I also don't, I cannot for the life of me understand why the water rate, as you're working your way out Route 12, starts off at, say, you know, Otter Street, for example, is 453, and for thousands, that's the village, the new rate, the village rate for the, for the towns' water districts, and then the next district out is, is Route 12 at 689, and then Orleans is $3.03.
Can I ask the question? Mike, are you asking that question as a taxpayer or as a councilman?
I guess a council person.
Okay. Cause I mean, right now, we're at public hearing, so...
Okay, all right, okay.
I just, I just wanna make clear, are you taxpayer, talking as a taxpayer?
Yeah. Okay, that's why I asked if there was anything...
Well, you can certainly talk as a taxpayer, cause you are.
Okay, I'll talk to the taxpayer. But I mean, I just, and then how, how these rates relate to, uh, village rates, which it would seem to me, unless I'm completely wrong, is the, whatever the village, I happen to know what that is as well, village water rates are, taking into fact how, all the various costs, storage, distribution, and treatment, that we've been, been repeated to us over and over and over again. So it would seem to me, whatever their rate is, takes all that into consideration. So from there, from that point, once it, once it leaves the village, it's that much money, and then whatever goes outside the village is whatever we tack onto it. How they could have differing rates outside the village, I, I just, you know, I don't quite understand that.
Um, I think, Mike, you were at some meetings that went on a year or two ago.
Yep.
A bunch of those meetings, and I don't have that chart here in front of me, but I see one right there, and I think I put one in front of everybody, that shows how those rates are created, and it shows how some of the districts have treatment and have storage, and some of them don't.
Okay.
That's the formula that was created and agreed upon.
Yep.
Between the town of Alexandria and the village of Alexandria Bay years ago.
Yep.
I understand that, you know, you have questions about that.
I think we're looking at things a little different than we have in the past. And it, but I, okay, let's say, for example, leaving the village of Alexandria Bay, first one, going out Route 12, the first water district you come to is, is Otter Street's Water District. 100% of the water pressure that, that portion, or is, you know, before the Route 12, um, district building, is, is all the pressure, I mean, you know, the stores, you know, the water tower provides the pressure, all that kind of heavy stuff, to that portion of our, of, of Otter Street Water District. So that would be $4.03. I've been told, I've had a little discussion with a village board member, that, okay, you know, it's, it's, uh, Route 12's Water District, their pressure is developed by the building opposite the Big M. So I said, yeah, they don't have storage. So that, so Otter Street has the three, the storage, distribution, and treatment. Route 12, according to this person, doesn't have storage. So if that's, if that's the case, why is their rate higher?
Didn't you follow, didn't you follow this, did they respond?
I haven't seen it this far. And, for example, like Supervisor, Redwood, uh, their proposed rate is $3,076. Okay, if that's, you know, and then the explanation out, always been given, is they don't have storage, which is they have the water tower, which provides the pressure and everything, and they have the pumping station at the end of, on 26th, at the village line. Okay, 376. Now, if it's 376 for them, why isn't 376 for Route 12? The same parameters apply.
Ronnie, you're looking at that chart. What is not figured in, uh, for Otter Street that is figured in for Route 12? Is that...
Storage. Otter Street pays for storage.
Right.
Redwood does not. Otherwise, they're identical.
What does, how about Route 12?
Route 12 pays for storage and distribution. Otter Street and Redwood, neither one of them pay for distribution.
And the reason that Otter Street doesn't pay for distribution, Rob, back me up on this, is because the town of Alexandria provided a distribution box and the piping junction on Church Street that went to Otter Street, that cost how much money, or we gave them X amount of dollars.
Now, for Otter Street, the town replaced, uh, about, I think it was 600 feet of water main on the village portion of Otter Street, between Church Street and the creek. And that was a line that was in poor condition at the time, and it had to be replaced in order to get the fire flows out to the rest of Otter Street. So that was done by the town and paid for by the town. So that, at the time, that was seen as a trade-off between distribution and...
That was done in place of paying distribution.
Correct. Now, they still need the storage, obviously, because Otter Street doesn't have a tank. And for that matter, Route 12 doesn't have a tank, so that's why they paid for storage as well. Initially, Route 12 was set up not to pay for distribution either, because of the previous improvements, but then that was changed, uh, at some later negotiation that I wasn't part of. That's another interesting one. The Otter Street, the town, again, the town board acts in behalf of these water districts. So you can't really say the town did anything, the water districts did that. Like, the various water districts are, who paid for all these various things? So just to make that clear. So if that, this, that, that section of Otter Street in the village got paid by the members of the Otter Street Water District, why is the Route 12 Water District continuing to pay for that? It's already paid for by a different district.
My, my understanding of the distribution portion was, the water plant is down at the river, and then you get, that's point A, let's call it, and then the connection point on the village line is point B. And that's distribution, to get it from point A to point B, and all the districts are supposed to share in the cost of that. That's my impression.
That's, that's not what we deserve.
Well, I'm just saying...
No, that's true.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is, what happened that's abnormal is that a section of the village distribution system on Otter Street was replaced and paid for by the people of the Otter Street Water District. And in lieu of that, they got a, they got a chance, they got, they didn't have to pay for distribution. In other words, they paid that, and it's kinda like they got a credit against their bill. They did not have to pay distribution going forward because of that. That's my impression.
Right, because the distribution system, as, as it was at the time, wasn't able to support Otter Street.
Right.
So there had to be improvements made by the village. Well, the village didn't have the, the resources to do that, so it was agreed that it would be rolled into... Well, the village didn't, Otter Street did.
Right, because of that, they don't have to pay for distribution.
I do think you have to keep in mind, in all these projects, that, uh, you know, the user costs, the way the funding agency structured the user costs, the user rates, the capital portion of the user rate is calculated first, what the affordability is, and then the funding agencies provide grant, you know, to get the user cost down to that point. So have to remember that when you say that the Otter Street Water District paid for it, significant part of that Otter Street project was a grant that didn't have to be paid for. Okay, and they paid for a portion of the capital that was seen as affordable by the funding agency. So it's a kind of a minor discrepancy, but it, it's important to remember that. They would've paid the same regardless. We've had this, this conversation, that's, it's semantics, and in my matter, it falls into the who cares category. It, it's in, it's done, it doesn't matter whether it was a grant or how it paid for it, but a particular water district paid for it, whether they, they, they just went to a car dealership and got a good price, and you went to the same car dealership and got a different price for the same car. It's just, you still got the car.
But Mike, they, Otter Street Water District paid for improvements inside the village of Alexandria Bay, and in return, they received benefit for that. Benefit being not having to pay for distribution.
Okay, so...
If they had not paid for, if, if the village of Alexandria Bay, I'm assuming, if the village of Alexandria Bay had paid for all those improvements in the village portion of Otter Street, then distribution would be on that line.
Okay. It's, it's over $2 difference.
I'm not saying it's calculated, you're asking why.
No, 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 but I'm just saying to the next water district, we're saying over $2 difference, is that? Is that the way it works out? I mean, from 453 to 689?
According to this, Route 12, for their portion, they paid $15,000 a year for distribution. Carnegie Bay pays $503. Edgewood pays just under $2,200. The village users inside the village pay a little over $106,000. And that's all under distribution. The total budget for distribution is $124,648. So that...
And something that complicates this a little more is the fact that Route 12 Water District was created after Otter Street Water District. So that's, it's a completely different situation with Route 12.
But that, that, again, that money in the water. We're talking about how much the village charges for the water, not for the date that these things were installed. That has nothing to do with it.
But how much they charge is based on a contract.
Exactly.
That was signed, two, two willing, uh, parties.
Okay.
Signed a contract, and my understanding is, this is what's resulted.
Now, we're coming up for renewal, and I'm asking questions.
Okay.
And this is a whole new ballgame, because it, that was a previous agreement.
Okay.
This is the new thing.
My understanding, I thought the contract was good for the life of the bonds or something.
Usually, the IMAs are, are good for the life of the financing, correct? The, the water rates are good for the life of the contract? No, not the water rate, but the... That's a way of...
No, 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 no. Hold on, hold on. There's a difference between how it's calculated and how much it is, in other words, the water rate. So I'm saying the structure, to me, the structure on how it's calculated is in the contract. How much that generates as far as a rate goes to something that can be... How much that generates as far as a rate goes to something that can be reviewed on a periodic basis to see if you think it should, you know, how it's being calculated.
But, you know, if I could come across it, you know, you mentioned, I think it was a hundred and twenty-some thousand dollars for the total distribution system?
Right.
And they mentioned a hundred-and-some thousand dollars for the village's distribution system.
They're paying, what they're doing is, they're taking the budgeted amount and then dividing it by the amount of water. So, in other words, Route 12, there's, okay, so there's four, four districts that are responsible for the distribution. Route 12, Carnegie Bay, Edgewood, and the village itself. And those four areas generate X amount of water, or use X amount of water. And the way the distribution is calculated is, if you use ten percent of that total, you pay for ten percent of the distribution cost. And it just happens that the village uses eighty-five percent of the water, and so they pay eighty-five percent of the distribution. And that's why these percentages are different, because under, let's see, treatment. Everybody pays for treatment. So, whereas Route 12 pays for just under thirteen percent of the distribution, they only pay a little over ten percent on the treatment cost, because you got a bigger base, you got a bigger number, because all the water, the water is included in that.
This actually makes, because this is the first time I've seen this chart, this actually makes sense to me. I do wish it was a little bit bigger, or you issued magnifying glasses, because that's, I'm sitting here struggling with it. But, if you look at the way they did it, they took all the districts, and as Ronnie was just explaining, depending on the category, whether it's treatment, or distribution, or storage, they take a percentage, they take what a district uses and make percentages. And then, depending on what the cost of the category is, if a district uses more, a larger percentage of the water, then they use a, they pay more for that particular expense. So, I said, this is, because I often wondered why it was different also. But, to me, this makes sense, and does explain it.
Okay.
I mean, I think that Mike's question here is not so much about the public hearings for these water rates. I mean, I understand, I understand that you don't agree with the rates and the fluctuations and the different amounts. But, this public hearing is, it is the water rates, but your situation that you have, that you've questioned, that you've questioned for a while, is really about the formula.
Well, how we get...
Isn't it, Ronnie?
But, that's a, that's a contract, yeah.
Okay, well, okay, going, following with you.
Tied to the debt.
Following with you. There's, you're linking the water usage and all these percentages. Does Edgewood use more water than Route 12?
Well, it's on here.
Do they? I'm just asking you.
Okay.
I think it can possibly.
No.
According to this, they use, it looks like a million gallons. Ones are, I'm assuming those are in thousands.
How is it possible? Does Carnegie Bay use more than Route 12, or Edgewood?
Hold on, so, you've got, okay, Carnegie Bay uses one-fourth as much water as Edgewood, and their cost on distribution is one-fourth the cost.
Okay, how is it possible, then, that their rate for all those three districts I just got mentioning are the exact same to that penny?
Because they're all based on the same, they're responsible for the exact same thing.
But, the quantities are incredibly different.
Right, but the thing is, they all track together. Their, their percentages of the total stay exactly the same. Doesn't matter what, what portion of the, what, there's three, three components.
Okay.
Treatment, storage, distribution. Their percentage of the total water, because they're responsible for everything, just like the people inside the village are.
So, the treatment for the, for all the water going to Carnegie Bay is roughly the same as other places?
I'm not following yet.
No, 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 I'm just trying to link all these together. So, in order for them to, my point is, for them, for these three districts, which are vastly different, then if with the exact same number to the penny, some aspects of those three components must be more for others, more or less, however it works out, for them to add up to the same number. Right?
If I'm in a, if I'm in a, if I'm under treatment, okay, and I'm paying on a percentage basis, okay, my rate, it's going to track. I guess that's what I don't understand.
Yeah.
If, if you...
You're not picking up what I'm trying to say?
I'm not.
It, okay, because it's all based on, on how much water goes into these districts, right? I just got done saying that.
Yeah.
Okay, and there's no way any, any two of these districts have the same amount of water.
Let's say...
So, we got three of them that have the exact same rate.
Right.
That's based on how much water.
So, let's say one district uses four times as much as the other district, okay? So, the one district pays ten dollars, the other one pays forty.
Okay.
When you divide it by it has four times as much water, you're back to ten again.
Exactly.
So, they got their exact same number.
No, I...
Okay, I think, I think this is a debate.
Yes.
For numbers, and we got to convince him what we're seeing, because he's not getting it, and I don't think this is the place, at this point in time, I may be wrong, but...
No.
Nobody is texting, and nobody's on it. Let's hope.
Then close the public hearing. Now, here's my question, everything that Mike has just corresponded with, is that going to be a part of the public hearing? That's the question.
It was on the floor as part of the public hearing, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Look, I recommend you close the public hearing.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Any seconds of that motion?
No question.
Second by standing, close the public hearing, any discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None.
Can I just ask a quick question then? And, so, while I'm doing the minutes and I'm looking at the public hearing, I guess my question here is, is, what is the question? I'm a little confused, is it, there were so many different degrees of question.
Basically, we're going to vote out approving these rates, the rates that are proposed.
But, as a public hearing, as a person, as a taxpayer, is, I guess my question is, is what you're asking is why, why the village has created these, these water rates? And why the town, and how the town is, is that the question? Is that the real question?
It is the question, because he's asking why this village, why these rates vary.
Okay, so, just like...
Why three of them are the same, and why there's another two that vary. And, we spent ten or fifteen minutes going through this formula creation document that was created years ago, trying to explain that when you, as Ronnie said, we use four times as much water, and then you multiply it times a percentage, because of the percentage deal that you're multiplying, it all comes out the same.
I just want to make sure, because I know that Route 12 was a part of the question. I know that Otter Street was part, Edgewood was part, but I just, I just want to make sure that I, you know, have it right when it comes down.
Okay. Are we doing one of these at a time, or all?
Yes, one at a time.
Okay, so that, one we just did, we closed the public hearing for Carnegie Bay Water District, rate change to seven ninety-three per thousand gallons.
Hold on, wait a minute, wait a minute. You have in front of you a series of ordinances, so that's what you're going to be voting on.
All five?
Right.
Yeah.
So, you start with, if I recall correctly, you're going to start with ordinance number seven, An Order permitting the Carnegie Bay Water District. It's been introduced and seconded, and I just bring it up for a vote.
Yep.
Okay, and then from there, you go to ordinance eight, ordinance nine, et cetera.
It was introduced and seconded at a previous meeting.
That's correct.
So, now, it was subject to the public hearing, that's closed, we can go right to a vote then.
That's correct. So, on the table right now is ordinance number seven, of the year two thousand twenty, Amending the Carnegie Bay Water District Ordinance to set the maintenance fee at twenty dollars eighty-three cents per quarter, and set the water rate at seven ninety-three per thousand gallons. That's the question.
In a normal situation, there's a motion's made, seconded, and then there's discussion before we vote. The public hearing kind of took care of the discussion prior to our vote.
No, you're entitled to discussion among yourselves, certainly.
Is this a roll call vote?
It's down as roll call votes, yes.
Yeah.
So, you just take them one at a time, and before you know it, ordinance number seven, blah, blah, blah. Is there any discussion? Yes, no? If not, call a question.
I don't have those ordinance numbers in front of me, Bob, so can you do that?
I'm going to get used, you can do it. You're in order.
Okay.
Jesse's going to want him when you're done, probably.
So, we're going to do this ordinance number seven?
Yes.
An ordinance permitting Carnegie Bay Water District Ordinance to set the maintenance fee, right, at twenty, at twenty eighty-three per quarter, and set the water rate at seven ninety-three per thousand.
Right, and you say, any discussion?
Any discussion?
You have the, we're talking about Carnegie Bay now.
Yep, yep.
And the same ordinance has got O and M, and the water rate, all in one?
Yes.
O and M has changed, correct? It's now just maintenance fee?
It's not two separate resolutions, is it?
No. It's one. It's ordinance number seven. Okay? We do a roll call vote?
Call the question. Call the question.
Call the question.
Read the names.
Supervisor Brent, please.
Yes.
Councilman Ron Thompson.
Yes.
Councilman John Stein.
Yes.
Councilman Mike Bayes.
No.
And Councilwoman Sandy Caputo.
And rate? Okay, we'll go on to number eight, An Order permitting the Redwood Water District Ordinance to set the water rate at four dollars and thirty-three cents per thousand gallons. Call the question.
Discussion?
Discussion. Any discussion? No discussion. Vote, roll call vote?
Call the question.
Call the question.
Supervisor Brent, please.
Yes.
Councilman Ron Thompson.
Yes.
Councilman John Stein.
Yes.
Councilman Mike Bayes.
I'm okay with that number, I'm going to say no.
Okay, so it's a no?
I'm going to say no.
Okay, and Councilwoman Sandy Caputo?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do ordinance number nine, An Order permitting the Route 12 Water District Ordinance to set the water rate at seven ninety-three per thousand gallons. Any discussion? Call the question?
There you go.
Gets easier than the better times of charm.
Gets easier.
Why can't you say roll call vote? Well, go ahead.
Supervisor Brent, please.
Technical, yes.
Councilman Ron Thompson.
Yes.
Councilman John Stein.
Yeah.
Councilman Mike Bayes.
No.
Councilwoman Sandy Caputo.
No.
Ordinance number ten, Amending, An Order permitting the Edgewood Water District Ordinance to set the water rate at seven ninety-three per thousand gallons. Call the question?
Supervisor Brent, please.
Yes.
Councilman Ron Thompson.
Yes.
Councilman John Stein.
Yes.
Councilman Mike Bayes.
No.
And Councilwoman Sandy Caputo.
Yes.
Ordinance number eleven, An Order permitting the Otter Street Water District Ordinance to set the water rate at five dollars and twenty-one cents per thousand gallons. Discussion? Call the question?
Supervisor Brent, please.
Yes.
Councilman Ron Thompson.
Yes.
Councilman John Stein.
Yes.
Councilman Mike Bayes.
No.
Councilwoman Sandy Caputo.
Yes.
Got the hang of it, Tom.
That'll be fine, thank you.
So, we're good with that, and I guess we'll, should we call Marilyn now for privilege of the floor?
Privilege of the floor? That what you said?
Yeah.
Privilege of the floor, yep.
Anybody calling at all?
She is, yeah.
I'm going to call Marilyn back, but you can...
Okay, well, I got a, we haven't had one of these for a while, but I got a Redwood Sewer billing grievance from, I'll say, Jay Gaskin. I'll read it. It's come to my attention that the Cars' property and garage has been relieved from paying a sewer fee. My property is next door, and I also do not have a sewer hookup. It is a garage, not a dwelling. I feel as, if my neighbor does not have to pay the fee for a service he is not receiving, then neither should I. I also understand that he was refunded, all the fees that he had paid. Please advise Jay Gaskin. And what this is reference, so I have to remember the Cars', garage property in Redwood, they, uh...
Well, yeah, as part of that settlement, we agreed that we would no longer bill anyone who was, you know, so...
And that was my understanding as well.
The billings should not have gone out.
But apparently, we are still charging for properties that don't receive a service.
I got charged too.
Yep.
I mean, we're all...
So, so, so we shouldn't be doing that.
That's right. I mean, that was what we adopted.
That's what I thought.
In settling the lawsuit, and what we stipulated to the court was that we would no longer be there.
So...
So, I didn't even take a motion, that was just something that was done incorrectly, right?
We just need to correct it, right?
Right.
The vacant lot should be stopped.
Well, if you don't receive a service, then you should be charged.
That's right.
Right, yeah, yeah. I mean, everybody's supposed to be treated the same.
Well, it should have been stopped, and it should be stopped now, and do it right and move forward.
Okay.
I knew it was wrong, I got billed too, but I figured someday they'd catch on.
So, so we officially stop billing for those parcels?
Should.
This board wrote it to do that. And we told the court we had done it.
And he, and, and those parcels got billed for it.
Yeah.
Which I'm one to.
Yeah, everybody, it should have been stopped, it wasn't, and I imagine, nothing...
So, there's been...
But it will be stopped in January, right? In January, they get the new...
No.
It'll be changed.
The way, the way yours, the way it's sounding right now is it's stopped, it should be stopped now.
It should be stopped now.
It should have been stopped when that legal action was, when the board voted.
And you're supposed to be reimbursing the ones that were illegally charged. Then in January, when the new tax goes in, hell, everybody's going to be billed.
Whatever resolution was with the Cars' people, whether it was reimbursed in the box, correct?
Yeah.
And that would think the same thing would apply? Yes.
To everybody.
So, Bob, would we send out this next bills? Okay, I think that those people were billed for one billing period, John? After the settlement?
Probably.
Should we?
I think we settled the Cars' case in January, or something like that.
Yeah.
Right, and we've had one billing go out in April.
In April, yeah, that shouldn't have gone out, right?
So, what should we do about the people that were improperly billed in April?
We should send them a notice saying they were improperly billed and send them their money back.
Right.
If they paid.
That's what I was getting at.
Do we send the money back, or give them a credit on the future ones?
I think it'd be cleaner to send them a check. I mean, it'd be a paper trail that way.
I don't think you give a credit.
Some of it, some could be kind of tasty, right? Some of it could be a fair amount of money.
Or just vacant lots, and it's not like you give a credit.
We were concerned that it was going to... Sewer district's already broke, and it's going to break in March. We're looking for a way to make everybody happy.
I agree with Ronnie, I think a check, we need a paper trail.
Yeah, no credit.
It'd be all done then.
So, I think Nicole's listening, we're going to make sure that when that next billing goes out, we, or actually before that, we can do that, we can do that now, right?
Yeah, I'm not saying it should be...
We should just issue a refund.
As soon as, as soon as practical.
Yep.
We should send checks out.
Yep.
So, this refund goes back to back a couple of years ago, and you change it?
No, no, we're going back to the date that we changed the law.
When the...
Come on, yeah, but we were billing illegally before then.
Right, but you should just track with the Cars'.
Right, whatever that, whatever the provisions were for that, right?
Right, why don't you ask her to give me a call, and I can give her the information?
Yeah, okay, tell her that, okay.
All right, please.
Okay, so I'll have Nicole do that. Now, Sandy, you have Marilyn on hold?
No.
Hello?
Hi Marilyn, we're back to ya.
Oh, you're back to me now?
Yep, go ahead, let's do some terms.
Can they hear me?
We sure can.
Okay, I have a question for them. Why are the sides of our town roads not mowed? I understand there's three men we have at our town barn plus Mr. Tibble. Some taxpayers are mowing the sides of the road in front of their places. Isn't it strange? We pay taxes for them to work for us, and we end up doing it ourselves, some of us. Please don't let Jay and Jamie be given this job too. They do a lot for all of our, all of us in our town. You all as a board have done a great job. Uh, uh, you've inherited many past problems from other boards. And I know of one other town that has a boss and three employees. They're out every day patching, mowing, cleaning sides of the road, chipping, and picking up brush. I can't believe it's above them to do that.
Marilyn, this, Marilyn, this is...
I commit, I, pardon me?
Marilyn, this is Brent, just to tell you what's going on at the Highway Barn, there's three employees. One is, one is a mechanic, and the other two are laborers, and they have worked, how many hours did you say, Mike, that they put into the dock, all, all, I mean, that was all the guys?
Other than one or two. Well, they've got him a panic in the other town I'm talking about, but he goes out in the road with the...
Right, but what I, I'm just telling you what they're doing at, our three guys are doing. They're responsible for, for taking care of the brush pit. The brush pit needs to be taken care of on Mondays and Thursdays by one of the employees. They've been working on the Butterfield Dock, which if you saw, has been fixed and put in, uh, and they've been doing other, other duties. As far as the mowing of the roads, uh, I'm not sure what the schedule is or, or how that's gonna happen, but I will definitely ask, uh, Mike, what his schedule is as far as that mowing is concerned.
It seems like Mike controls the board instead of the board, and us taxpayers controlling him. You guys have done a wonderful job. There's many discrepancies that's happened with our board members, and they've been, uh, not treated right. That's all I'll say on that. I do need to commend you all for having Sandy Caputo on the board. And one last thing I wanna say, Brent, is the Highland Park Cemetery, I've been checking them just like Norris, and they're dumping the trash now beside the water fountain. They will not look at a sign to take their stuff out of there, and, um, I just was wondering if the board would consider just putting a big ad in the paper and telling them. Maybe they'll know enough to read the paper.
Well, we'll do something, we, we can go, we can go by and pick that up. I think there was a while ago that you called me, or Mickey called me about the trash that was being put there. I went there.
I did.
I went there and picked up the trash, and I'd be happy to do it again. We have Jay and Jamie that are wandering around. I think the best thing to do is for us to just keep an eye on it and try to keep it, try to keep it picked up. I think you and some other people watch that cemetery very closely. When you see something that needs to be attended to, please call us.
Well, I've gotten several, several calls, um, why don't we see them town employees doing anything? They don't come to a meeting, give us a list of what they're doing. We only get it from you, Brent, which I appreciate, but there's no reason that they're, they're not out cleaning the sides of the road and mowing. That, that's my complaint, and I'm sorry. It's wrong, it's always been done, and, uh, I would hope that the, you and the board will talk to Mike and he will start doing those things.
Okay.
People are not happy, but it's strange, I have to be the one to call yous, but people will call me, and you know that, Brent. I get calls on stuff. That's why I run on for the board to be as honest and to help the taxpayers. We're the ones that are getting kicked in the teeth along with this nice board we got, and it's not fair, it's not right. I, I've said it, this is all I'm gonna say.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you for your...
Thank you all for what you do do. Write down the line, Sandy, John, Brent, Mike, and Ronnie. Thank you all.
Okay, thanks Marilyn.
Okay, bye-bye now.
Anything else? Anybody have anything else for privilege of the floor? Okay, where were we? We were on the Burnwell trailer, Bob.
Burnwell, yeah.
Oh, the Burnwell trailer. So you should have in front of you, uh, the resolution.
I don't have that. I think there were three documents that you forwarded me in relation to that, and I gave those all to Norris. One was the public notice, others this resolution.
Yeah.
Is there anything else?
No, the resolution essentially schedules a public hearing for June, uh, authorizes Norris's post a notice and mail a notice to the property owner, to Mr. Lawton.
Yep.
Telling him that he's got the right to appear to a hearing on June seventeenth. Otherwise, if he doesn't appear, then, uh, you will issue an order that the town will take it down, and then the cost of that can become a lien on the real property. We have to follow procedures in order to impose the lien.
Yep.
So that's, that's the purpose for that, is to schedule the public hearing for him to come in and explain why he shouldn't have to clean it up.
So this is scheduling a hearing in connection with a claimed unsafe dangerous structure located in the town of Alexandria.
Right, that's one of the rats all over.
I'm sorry?
One of the rats.
Yep. Uh, and the date of that is, what'd you say, June?
It's in the res, I think it's June seventeenth, whatever the date of your...
Next meeting?
Your next meeting is. It's, it's in the resolution.
June twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Uh, Wednesday, June twenty-fourth, at five fifteen, we'll have a public hearing, uh, in connection with this unsafe dangerous structure located in the town.
Well, it's not really a total hearing, it's a hearing for him to come in and explain why he shouldn't be required to tear it down.
So I need, I need a motion to schedule that hearing?
You need to adopt that resolution.
Adopt this resolution then?
Right.
Schedule it.
You want, you want to go make some copies or something?
Do you want copies of the papers?
What happens if he doesn't show up?
Then, then it should be ordered that, uh, Norris dig it down, or hire things down, and then the cost of that becomes a lien on the property. Then you can go into taxes.
Now that the courts are open, isn't, isn't that process?
They're not open. They're not open.
Oh.
The courts are open for small claims and civil matters.
Okay.
The purpose of this is to allow us to do the work, because we don't think it's going to, all right? And then, and then to put the cost of that as a lien on the property, so whatever sells, it's a lien, it's like taxes, I'm gonna give it a take, that's the purpose.
Just for clarification, so when that becomes a lien on the taxes, if the taxes don't get paid, the county makes the town whole, so when they, eventually when the property sells, county gets reimbursed at that time? That's how it works?
So we'll get our money back from the county because of what it's taxed.
Right, and the county's gonna get stuck.
The county will get stuck with it until they sell.
Yeah, because the property's not worth what it's gonna cost me, no, I know it is.
You, you're probably right.
Right, okay.
There's not much difference between that and what, the, the place we tore down here a couple of years ago. Yeah, Janass, yeah.
Same idea.
That worked out well, actually.
Yep, it did.
Yeah.
Great. Yep. Back on the tax roll.
That's right.
Okay, are we all set without?
Soon as you vote on it.
So we need to vote on scheduling that hearing?
She's making copies of the resolution, you each have it, you call for discussion, and then call the question.
Okay. Call the question.
Doesn't make sense for me to, Brent, still feel bad.
Call the vote. Call the question.
Yeah, call the question.
I don't have a question. Didn't teach us...
The question is, shall the resolution be adopted?
Didn't teach us that in engineering school, did they, Mike?
No.
Thank you.
It was, it was an unfortunate fire, is there, is there, is there a fortunate fire? Sometimes.
Yeah.
Yes, sometimes, uh...
First, first sentence.
Okay. Do we need to go, read this?
No.
Okay, any discussion on scheduling this hearing in connection with this property?
I make a motion to schedule it?
Motion by Ron?
I'll look at that.
Second by John?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Call the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Brent Sweet?
Yes.
Brent, or Councilman Ron Thompson?
Yes.
Councilman John Stein?
Yeah.
Councilman Mike Bayes?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Sandy Caputo?
Oh.
Yeah, we'll change that.
Yeah, you gotta change that.
Did it not say Sandy?
No.
No, it said Jane.
Oh, shoo, you're gonna have to get that changed. Send me the PDF and I'll...
Sorry about that.
That's because...
You know why?
That's because I...
It's how long ago the order is.
I, I was just gonna say, that's because this was done last fall. We won't go into that, Bob.
All right.
Uh, property survey results for Route Twelve, so all of those discussions that we've had about the Route Twelve property with Mr. Randall, that, that piece has been surveyed, and we have the survey maps here. And now we have to do, put it up for bid, go through the process of putting that piece of property up for bid.
Right.
So, we make the survey maps available to anybody here, and we announce that we're putting it up for bid, or adverti, advertise that we're putting it up for bid.
Just, just for like an illegal knowledge, legal, that's right, yeah.
And, uh, we go through that process.
Are you gonna, are you gonna set any kind of an upset price?
Yes.
This is the cost of the survey, wasn't it? That's why I recall.
Any costs associated?
Yes.
So, was there anything in addition to the survey?
Not that I know of. I really probably should talk to LeFay, White McGovern, to make sure that fifteen hundred was the number.
Yeah, did we upfront that, or did he? Was, was the fellow who wanted to buy it, wasn't he gonna upfront it, or no? I can't remember, yeah, that was... I know we've talked about it lots of different ways.
Right.
And you'll probably also wanna put in the ad, I, I'm not sure, but it, um, all, um, could be, uh...
Have the right to.
Have the right to not be...
Set the reject any, you know?
Yeah, reject it.
Yeah, if, yeah, if it doesn't meet the minimum?
Well, you can even, it can even come in higher, and you can reserve the right.
Better.
Yeah, but you still reserve the right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna set a number?
Fif, well, fifteen hundred, right?
Fifteen hundred.
Is your upset price?
Are we sure of that number?
No, I, I, I mean, that was, that was what he told us it was gonna cost to have a survey.
We'll find out, no?
Well, if we're gonna do the advertising and go through the procedure tonight, we need to have that number. Not to be determined later. The other thing, we, we do have the right to refuse the bid.
Right.
And if we say just, well, we can just put it up for bid, uh, we gotta put up, we, do we have to put a minimum on it? We don't.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's some kind of framework.
But we have to cover our costs.
Right.
That's the intent, I guess, with it.
Could we just, just say whatever cost we have, we just don't know what they are right now?
Yep.
No. What, how large a piece of property is this?
This is a piece of property that Route Twelve, they, they moved Route Twelve and they redid the road back in whatever, right?
Yeah, you know where, um, across from, uh, uh, the...
The old Beeper?
Eighty, Out of At, Motive, and all that, the Route Twelve used to go, you know, more to the north, and then when they realigned it, uh, it still does, the right of way is still way out there. And the DOT is, is willing, it, it, I guess, I think the, the town of Alexandria is the underlying property owner, so that's...
DOT turns it over to the town of Alexandria after they redid the road.
Yeah.
So, this gentleman owns the adjacent property.
Right.
And he wants to purchase the property from the town of Alexandria. We can't sell the property to him because we have to establish fair market value, which means we have to put it out for bid for anybody to buy.
Right.
Okay, so, fair market value isn't the cost of a survey?
No.
That would be the cost of an appraisal, and whatever the appraisal is based, comes in that, 'cause fair market value would be what other pieces of properties that, you know, with the same...
So you know, like, it's assessed out, and that's...
It, it, it can't be assessed because it's...
Because it's owned by the town and we're not being taxed.
Well, fair market value is where the willing buyer pays a willing seller. We're just putting a floor on, has to be a leaseback so we get our, so we get our money back.
So can we call a survey tomorrow?
I would, I know what it is.
Back on the tax rolls.
Before we just advertise it, no, all right, we done with it?
Yeah, I was just gonna say to Sandy that the rules that we've always been governed by to establish fair market value is what you just said, fair market value is established through the bid process.
Willing buyer, willing seller.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we want a middle one.
We think that we paid twelve, or fifteen hundred dollars for a survey, so go a little bit high and say two thousand dollars is the minimum bid, 'cause it's right on Route Twelve, yes? It has water? Does it have sewers?
Not, not yet, but it has water.
But it probably will?
No, no, the sewer coming this fall, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, depending on the size of the lot.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a building, the lot or not.
It, no, it's, there's a building on it.
That, that's on that property?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. That looks like...
I know the building, it was a produce stand.
Yeah, I just had to search it today, I just had to look into it, it's a, it's a crossfire.
There's more land there than I thought.
Yeah, that, it, right.
Yeah, I don't think two thousand would come.
It's right here.
Hasn't he rented that, that place out?
It's an Apple store, there's a building, see, there's the highway boundary right there. It's this piece right there.
That's a good place to be around.
Well, that too is.
Rent somebody.
Well, it comes to a point, I don't have a parallel like this, but it's just three of his property. It's Mr. Randall.
Yeah, I know, I know, Rob.
He owns all that back that way.
Used to be owned by Jack Snow.
I'm calling Rob Busman.
Who, who charges rent at the, at that place? Is it Reynolds?
Well, see, that's another, I've been looking at this, kind of a little story, years ago, I had a situation in Essex County, very similar to this, where actually, um, the highway boundary got really wide, and there was, and it was up on the side of a, sort of a hill, and, and, uh, there's obviously private property behind it. This guy set a, a, a trailer on it, and was living on it, and put a mailbox out and everything, and the people in behind it, like, say, Mr., like, where Mr. Randall is, it's like...
Hey, Rob, you're gonna speak...
Contact me and say, what's going on here? And I've given by it hundreds of times, and I assumed it was private property, and then you look at the, the highway plans, and it's like, it's just a white piece of the right of way. He, he's, that building, they're paying no tax, no, no nothing, it's not really a lot, at all.
They can't adversely possess against the municipality, so...
Right.
Yeah, don't get any rights by doing it.
No, well, like, like that guy, I had to go tell him, you gotta get off.
Yeah. That, that building's been there at least forty years.
I, I know, I, I, I just assumed it was, you just look at it, you don't, you don't... Until you look at that and realize it's something different.
There was a woodworker there, wasn't there, like, last summer?
Well, it got built by a guy by the name of Jack Snow, 'cause he used to be the general manager of the boat line.
Sold produce.
Was that? Produce, Snow Farms was the name, he, he used to go to the regional market.
Yeah. Well, I think we're gonna have to wait, 'cause I don't have a, a price on that survey.
It's gonna fill up in a month until it's right, right?
Yeah.
And forty years, it's another month.
I, 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 I'm gonna say my circumstance, I wouldn't even have been aware of it, even said anything, until the property owner behind them, then, said, hey, this is crap. You shouldn't be there, it's basically my front yard.
So the survey shows that whole building is on that property?
Oh, yeah.
Might be a tiny bit.
Mike, why don't you add something by it out, out of the old railway?
That new highway went in in the sixties.
Well, Mr. Randall had a set of plans, I can't remember the date, when they, when, uh, when Route Twelve was realigned, where, you know, everybody kind of knows it to be now. I don't, I don't, without going down the water town, or...
The tax, tax map, it doesn't show it as...
There's no tax parcel?
Yeah, right.
It's just the highway boundary.
Uh, it was deeded to the town in nineteen thirty-seven.
Okay.
Must've been the original Route Twelve?
It was deeded to the town of Alexandria on February five, nineteen thirty-seven, and again on March twenty-seventh.
Nothing new.
So, Rob, how do you handle that parcel? The water line's already gone through, if they want water service, they'd have to pay to have it installed. The water line's already gone through, if they want water service, they'd have to pay to have it installed.
Well, we'll have to get, right, that's another issue, I mean, we'll have to get right of ways to put the sewer line in, okay? Just like we did the water.
As far as the sewer?
Yeah, we need to...
Yeah, the proposed sewer's on that, on that side too, yeah.
So, we have to get right of ways from the property owner that we're putting a pipe in, across the property and into their home.
Yeah.
Well, currently, it belongs to the town, so...
I was gonna say, we just wanna sign it right now, then it stays...
Yeah, you can sign the easement now.
I was gonna say, we signed the easement, we're gonna turn it over, and we're gonna do...
Yeah.
Yeah, because the sewer, obviously, if we do that now, there's no cost to the property owner.
Well, we're the current owners.
We, we had the highway boundary survey.
Yeah, by the survey, yeah.
Right, we did, LeFay surveyed the highway boundary. And so, where's the high, is the highway boundary shown closer to the...
It's on the, it's on the backside of that building.
So, so, is it, so, we're not talking about where the building sits?
You know where the, where the Napa store is?
Right.
Right across the road from that, there's, uh, the, I've seen them, they sold, like, knickknacks, yard stuff.
Yeah.
That building.
Right, and that's the parcel. Doesn't state that New York's still on that?
No.
No, okay.
The highway boundary is on the west side of that building?
Isn't it between the old thirty, the old thirty-seven and the new twelve, between the two roads, right?
What's that again?
Isn't that part of the...
How can we be auctioning off?
Mounting by the old, the old one down?
Something like that, within the highway boundary.
It's right, but right up to Point Vivian, if you're going into Point Vivian right there.
Where you go, Jack.
That's the parcel we're talking about, right?
Jack kinda lived there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's like a big eyebrow.
Road, when you enter.
Right, but how can we be auctioning off something that's within the highway boundary?
No, no, what the state does is, um, they have what's called surplus property, and what, you know, let's just say that all they really need is four rods, sixty-six feet. And then anything outside of that is surplus property, they can be sold to, usually the people, usually it's like a skinny piece of the property, that only has any value to the adjacent property owner, but this is a little bit bigger than that.
That's a big gate.
Uh, so, it's a viable building lot, you know?
Oh, yeah.
There's a building on it.
Well, there's a business that ran there, had parking and everything.
Absolutely. Now, the, the other thing about it is, usually what they do as well, I mean, you can see there's like the KiWade property here, usually they extend the, the property lines, you know, so, so you wouldn't say this guy wouldn't buy all this.
Exactly.
These people, you know?
Isn't that what Mr. Reynolds wanted to do, just buy the piece that came out from his property lot?
That's all he's really interested in.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, um, you could potentially land lock somebody by having a little sliver in front of them.
Yeah.
Right, how far does that go towards the bridge?
I don't know, I don't, I don't, I don't look at the map.
Comes back in with the right of way, I would assume, it's a long, narrow sliver.
Yeah, I know, I mean, it's fairly, it looks like it's at its widest point right there.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just wondering, how far is it go before it...
Go beyond London Grove Road?
That is London Grove Road, it's there.
Goes up by where all those boats are, sure.
Yeah, I know, it does.
Almost, almost to Sir Robert.
Here's the highway boundary, it kind of comes back in, um, where Mike Chavis, he has his boat placed, that's pretty much where it comes in.
Who's the property owner on the backside, up where it goes that far?
Mr. Randall.
Oh, okay.
It was coincidentally, we're really, we're, you know, pretty much right where it comes in.
So, the only real issue, not the issue, is the, is KiWade?
Yeah, KiWade, right, this side is in good shape, the other side, just, I guess Ki, would, I probably have to talk to KiWade and then say, hey, you know?
KiWade's got everything, maybe.
I don't know if the state would wanna buy from us or not. I mean, I care, I don't know.
Okay, open up Pandora's box.
So, are we doing the resolution on that, or we're gonna table that, okay?
There we go.
Sounds better. Number eleven, decision approval for the cement blocks, I think everybody's got a picture here, we talked about this last time, asked me to look into this deal. Uh, this is sale, thousand dollars ready mix, uh, for a hundred and twenty dollars, we can buy two of these blocks.
A hundred and twenty, I thought they were fifty bucks a piece?
Sixty-five dollars a piece with the pipes installed.
Okay, well, you were telling me fifty earlier, I'm just kidding.
Sixty, sixty dollars a piece with the, with the pipes installed. They will pour these and put the pipes in them, so we'll have signposts coming up out of them that we can put our signs on. We'll put two of these over at the brush pit, and kind of create a delineated line of where we want everybody to dump behind, and we'll put signs on the poles coming up out of these, saying what the rules and regulations are for the brush pit.
Just out of curiosity, what, what purpose do those Vs?
That's the forms that they have, and I think, as Mike was saying, it makes an interlocking system.
Like, they'll have, like, this is like a, the female ones, they'll have ones where the, that we like them, a fit, it'll fit them together.
They probably make seawalls and stuff.
Yeah, I was looking at the other side, and the other side's identical, so I assumed you'd have female one side, male on the other, and it's not a big deal, just my curiosity.
No, but they, they make them all.
Are we gonna be moving ground?
What's that?
Are we gonna wanna be moving these?
We're gonna pick, we're gonna pick them up, they're gonna have a lifting hook in the center.
They're gonna hook them, okay.
Yeah.
Because we're probably wanting to get up there, as we go, they will...
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're gonna bring them here, are we gonna get them out of it?
We're gonna take them up there, he'll load them on a trailer for us, we'll take them to the brush pit, we'll get the highway boundary to show up at the brush pit with a loader, lift them off, put them where we want.
Okay.
Whenever I've bought from them, they, they've got a truck that's got a boom on it.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll set it for you right there.
I'm sure he will. This is probably, probably not for a hundred and twenty dollars.
He's gotta go there anyway.
Is this TI or Jefferson Concrete?
Thousand dollars ready.
Yes, I mean, he charges X amount of dollars an hour, and it's a reasonable rate, and it's a lot cheaper than that.
He's not gonna go there and pour them.
I realize that, I thought, how, how are they getting from TI concrete?
We're gonna, we're gonna pick them up.
Pick them up at TI concrete? Oh, okay, I thought they were being delivered.
No, he's gonna load them on, at TI.
Forget I said anything, can I rewind?
There we go.
So, if everybody's okay with that, I need a motion to go ahead and purchase these blocks and signs and so on and so forth.
Go ahead and purchase, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mike?
Second?
Second by Ron, any further discussion?
Well, the only other, do we have an idea what we want the signs to say? Do we have signs?
We talked about this at the last meeting, about the different things that we've talked about, as far as who gets to use the pad, who was for, the taxpayers and so on, so I thought I would put something together to go on those signs and send it to you.
Okay, so that's a future discussion, what the signs gonna say.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, motion by you, second was by who? Ronnie?
Brunt.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Permanent process fee for downtown residents to use the transfer site, we, I think we talked about this before. My thoughts are that we create a fee, and we put a, uh, create, I guess that we used to have a detail or sticker that people got, that said Town of Alexandria Transfer Site on it, I think that that sticker should say the year, and you pay, I originally said twenty-five dollars a year, that gives you, whether you're in Hammond or whatever township you're in that is not the town of Alexandria, gives you the right to use our transfer site, and to go there and pay our regular fees.
Okay. How does, how's Byron gonna know where somebody's coming from?
Sticker on the car.
Sticker on the car. Sticker gets, sticker gets sold here, right? Byron gonna know where somebody's coming from, the same way he knows right now, which he doesn't know.
Exactly.
And we have a lot of people that come there, that...
But I'm just saying, if you come from the town, you have no sticker in your car, you come from a different town, you also have no sticker in your car.
Yeah.
He's, you know, how, how is he gonna know?
I think, I mean, everybody needs a sticker.
I thought, I thought maybe we oughta buy license plate readers.
No, so you're saying everybody in the town would get a sticker, and that we would know anybody that's not from the town?
That's not a way to be able to know.
Okay, so that's what you're saying, not the other way around.
No, I'm saying that the non resident people buy a sticker, buy a sticker for twenty-five dollars. We have in the past given a sticker to everybody in the town, is that right, Jesse?
Well, not really, what happens is, or this was back then, is that we have these little red stickers that says Town of Alexandria, that's all it says. And back in the day, we still do it now, if there's a new person that moves into the township, they come to the office, we look them up, make sure they're on our tax roll, and then we give them, the Town of Alexandria's red, it's a little tiny little thing, and then what I, what we do, or what we've done, is put their actual address on it. So, if they were at four, six, six, oh, five State Route thirty-seven, we wrote that on there, because it's associated with this, with the property, not with the person.
I was really, I was really trying to not make this real complicated.
No, that's...
And Byron does know, for a lot of the people that come there from other townships.
I'm just trying to make it easy for him, because you know, I mean, when we raised the price of the, this dumping off of value, how old it went, people got very upset, you know, you're gonna get somebody showing up from a different town, and he's gonna have to contend with somebody having, saying, you know, you gotta pay us a little bit extra, actually.
Yeah.
Here's a little, just so food for thought, we used to, um, five years ago, six years ago, we used to do the same thing. We used to charge people for an outside fee, except there was a lot more, and we would give them stickers. Here's where we found out the problem. Because you have a lot of people that are from Hammond or Chipewabbe that have rental units, they would always go up and say, I'm from Hammond, my rental, my rental owner told me to come on up and use it, and they already paid the fee. And so, we kept on finding that they either never kept up their fee, because it kind of kept, you know, under the water, it just was never looked at, so if they came up and they paid the fee for, say, twenty-five dollars, the next year, it was, it was kind of disappeared. And people kept on doing that, and that's where it started to unravel, because they either, A, didn't bring the sticker up, or they got so irate that said, well, I'm calling so-and-so that is somewhat prominent in the town that they know, because she, because they have rentals, and we, you know, she told me to come up here, and that's where we started finding out that, how it started to unravel. And then at that point, they stopped doing it, because...
I thought, I thought the sticker should have the year on it. I, I saw stickers, a business over in Wells Island that lets people park their vehicles there.
Yeah.
And that they have a sticker that says...
I'm not trying to overly complicate it, I just, where my parents are over in Sealurch County, everybody in the town, I don't know where it is, shows up with their taxes or something like that, a sticker, you know, that's got a number on it, like you're saying, and, you know, acknowledges that you're in the town, you can put on your car and out, or whatever you wanna do, but you put it on your car, which, when you drive into the transfer site up there...
Byron sees it, he's all set.
You're already there.
Right.
Anybody that shows up that doesn't have one, then you know.
Can't use it.
Well, you either can't use it, or there's a different chart. That's how you know with somebody different.
Or with a different color, because right now, they're all these red little tiny, tiny tabs.
I, I don't know, like, as you go by, like, one year is yellow, one year is red, it becomes blue, I don't know, I don't know how that works, but you'll see a sticker with a number on it. And, and when, when they are down in Florida, that's what they do as well.
I'm trying not to reinvent the wheel for one thing, and the second thing is, I'm trying to not have Byron have to police something else, as Byron has done now.
If everybody had stickers, you wouldn't have to police it.
No, it's gonna be a while for everybody to have stickers.
I'm just, I'm trying to save him from somebody getting all tort about a bag of garbage, and it is no such, you know, having him contend with anyone, great reality does.
What's not like a hard, like, something that we could make that wouldn't be so expensive, is like one of those hard business cards, where you, instead of doing a sticker, you do kind of like a hard, like, you know, like, um, business card, put on there, Town of Alexandria, a resident only, or something, where it doesn't really have too much stuff clout to it, and then you, because the people have to get in their wallet to get their money, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that could be something that they get used to just pulling out and saying, here's, here's my card.
I thought of that, the only reason I didn't bring that up with this deal is because then they can give it to other people.
Well...
The card.
But it does, yeah, but, but you have the card, then you pay, right?
I was thinking, as you're saying that, you know, you have a wallet, you got your driver's license in it, but, you know, I was thinking, that'd be, that'd be just it. But we have a lot of people here that are actually summer residents, but they own a place down in Florida, so they have a Florida license plate, so that's not gonna help either.
Yeah, yeah, um, maybe this best to just have a sticker that you stick on there in one different color.
I, I'm just trying to save Byron any more hassles than he already contends with, that's all.
Our stickers used to say right on them where they were from, so if someone came in and bought the, like, say they were from Hammond, we actually would put Town of Alexandria, or put Hammond residence, and it was that, and it was right on there, as Hammond resident, so, just a food for thought.
Just to muddy the water a little bit more, how much does the transfer site run in deficit?
Sixty-six thousand dollars.
Okay, how many parcels do we have inside?
Forty-one hundred.
Forty-one hundred, and a lot of them probably don't generate any garbage. I just, what I'm getting at is, that, right now, the town residents are subsidizing the transfer station at a rate of X amount of dollars. People from outside should pay at least that much since, and I'm...
I agree, that's why, that's the whole reason I'm saying this, is because, you know, you might have a thousand people in Town of Alexandria using that transfer site, and you got three thousand people subsidizing it.
Right.
And I'm saying parcels, and not people. Yeah.
And we used to, we used to sell them for a hundred dollars, the outside users.
I think twenty-five.
I mean, we were like selling them for a hundred bucks every, every year.
Yeah.
And people would buy them.
And then, and then you had to pay?
And then pay on top of it, you're trying, yeah, you had to pay on top of that.
Hundred, hundred bucks, you don't talk about it.
No. But people did it, you know?
But how, how did, how did people pick up their sticker? You said that...
They came to the office.
Yeah.
They brought us their tax, um, tax information.
So, the burden was on them to come and get the sticker?
Yeah, they had to come and get it, they had to bring us their tax information, and then once they gave us our tax information, we got a photo ID of them, we got the tax ID, and then at that point, we made a sticker, um, we just used, uh, we had a, like, a thing, you know, to put right into your copier machine, made a sticker that said Hammond resident only, um, start to finish date, when they purchased it, to one year, from that date.
It had a finish date on it?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, my lord, so you're gonna get up to the car, you said this thing's this big?
Well, that's, no, it was, for those, for those people, it was a, it was a regular, like, little three by five or something like that. But for the town, the ones that we give to people are tiny, they're like this big, Town of Alexandria, red little tabs. Yeah, but for them, they were bigger.
I mean, I was just thinking of something that has the year on it, and it expires every year.
Yeah, because you can't, you can't, you can't put a year on it.
I agree.
When you send the tax bills out, you send them one sticker per household.
I was just gonna say, you know how we do the billing and we do the stuff for the signage at the rink?
Yeah.
Same procedure.
Well, I'm just thinking, is there any way to stick that with something that goes out to everybody? I'm just thinking about saving an envelope. Yeah, but does, how does that...
The tax bill comes already perforated and...
I was gonna say, that all comes from Watertown, right?
It does, yeah.
See, and I'm not, and I'm not thinking about providing something for all the people in Town of Alexandria. I'm thinking of just dealing with these people that are outside users.
What kind of questions, how does Byron know?
Byron knows a lot of them, he's been there a long time, he knows a lot of them, and, and there's, there's a lot of people that use our dump that are especially from Hammond and Chipewabbe, a lot of people.
Right, right.
How about, kind of like middle ground, is, is, um, I mean, there's like over four thousand parcels in the town. Of all those, I'm definitely one of them, I don't use the transfer site, I have it, I have it on service, so, of that four thousand, it's probably two thousand maybe, or even probably less than that, that actually use it. So, if you just made it an annual thing, uh, every January, town resident, come pick up your sticker.
I think you get to that first.
No, no charter, yeah, just, if you wanna use a transfer site.
So then, so then Byron has gotta be at the dump, and when they don't have their sticker, does the sticker go on their car, or does it go on their wallet?
Car.
I think car.
So when they don't have that vehicle.
Well, yep, that's kinda.
And they have a, and they're a two or three-vehicle family, so Byron has to police the cars now, and the stickers that are on the cars. I'm just saying, it's just gonna get it complicated.
It becomes overwhelming at that point.
I'm trying to make it as simple as possible for Byron.
Okay, but he does it, like, like the example that Jesse gave, you know, seasonal people from, you know, Byron's not gonna know them at all.
He'd be surprised.
And, and, and a lot of them.
I mean, he's not gonna know everybody, but he knows a lot of, he knows most of the people that go through.
Once people glom onto is, is don't say, you know, I always say you're from the Town of Alexandria, you know, that's what they're gonna say.
Why couldn't we do, if you didn't wanna do everyone, why couldn't we do then just your singular sticker for those certain people that come and pay? We make a, we make a chart. If they need how many cars they have, we give them two stickers, and we write it down, we write their names down, we take all the information. And then we just keep, I mean, you know, I, it, it, but then they could give it to somebody.
Say, Brad, go, tell them you got two cars, give me a sticker, huh?
Yeah, it's just, it's, yeah, it's just one of the, it's just a trust thing. Trust them or you don't.
I don't know the answer. This is a real simple problem. We're having trouble with this.
Good point. Well, like I said, I think the biggest thing that I'm trying to do is not really make it, make this thing complicated, you know? And if we, if we can get twenty-five people to give us twenty-five or fifty bucks and have the right to use that. Right now, the taxpayers of the Town of Alexandria are subsidizing people from other towns that use our dump. That's my whole point here.
And, and people are using it now.
Yeah.
That are from Hammond, that are from different places. I know a lot of people that, that.
So do I.
But does, does Hammond have a transfer site?
They do, but it's on the other side of Hammond, and it's too far.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't wanna go that, they don't wanna drive that far.
So are you comfortable with, like, say, charging fifty bucks and have Byron collect the fifty bucks?
I'd say that whatever we're gonna have, that we're gonna give the person to show that they paid the fifty dollars, I think it should be sold here, and I think it should be sold by Byron. Because you're gonna have people that are gonna go to the dump, and on a Saturday, when this isn't open.
Right. And then what are you gonna have them do? Just write down, like, on a, have a sticker and have them just actually write?
Have a form or how it's, they write it on.
Whatever they need to do, yeah?
I mean, I'd say, yes.
May I be excused? May I be excused? I've got an emergency. Do you have any extra cooler room at Crossroads?
Have an extra what?
Any cooler room at Crossroads?
Cooler?
No.
I have room in my walk-in.
Because my compressor just blew up, and my cooler's down, and I gotta go. I might come back though.
I have.
I gotta get stuff out of there.
We'll still be talking about nervous.
I have room, I have room in my walk-in, if you need to put stuff in the walk-in.
Okay.
Okay? And probably room in my deli cabinet.
All right, thanks.
Well, I guess we're not gonna, I'd say we don't sign this tonight, but think about it. Let's come up with something simple.
We need to, I agree. I'm behind that a hundred percent. You were thinking about too hard or something.
That's why I was trying to make it real easy.
Yeah, I understand.
What do, what do other towns do?
I have no idea.
That's another, you know, maybe there's something, there's something that they do that we can just copy.
I mean, at this point in almost the first of June, for us to get into a process right now that we're gonna make every taxpayer of the Town of Alexandria who use that dump come here and get something, is gonna be a difficulty.
We find more garbage along the road than we are now.
Yeah.
I mean, my thoughts were, if we could initiate a system that's not complicated, and that we put a sign at the transfer site, and we put a couple ads in the paper for a couple weeks.
We can start with that.
This is what you do, and this is how you do it, and this is how much it is.
Well.
We'll move on.
This place would be right up there.
What's that?
Spend the money on a sign, and just have it right up there.
Yeah.
It's a targeted audience, and that's where they're going?
Yep. Okay. Well, we'll, I'll, I'll send you guys emails, and we'll hash this out, call for the solution. Uh, resolution to order a milfoil harvester. I have a, I sent you all an email a couple weeks ago that has all the specs and everything about the milfoil harvester machine. We may have even done a resolution to do this already, I'm not sure, but just to give us permission to order this.
The thing we did that is because it's, I see you're concerned about no additional, no cost.
And, and that's, that's how come I had that email created that I gave you guys that shows that this is a hundred percent grant-funded program.
Yep, I remember that. I think we already did.
As this whole thing is. So I'd just like to, for the record, uh, have a resolution to allow us to, allow me to order the harvester machine and the materials that one hundred percent grant-funded.
I'll, I'll make the.
Motion by Ron, second by John. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, none. This is a step scientist. Okay, you have, uh, that was in the order here. This is the updated IMA, I believe. Uh, Attorney Russell's looked at it for, for Clayton, and Attorney Burrows has looked at it for Orleans and the Village of Alexandria Bay. I think we've seen, they're okay with it. Just wanna, I don't think we passed a formal resolution that we're okay with it. This is the, what Mike and I worked on. Mike did most of the work.
I know, this particular IMA, um, involves the village and the three towns. And, and, and they make reference to the previous IMA, but this IMA, well, we amended it or created the one change, it, um, made reference to a wheeling charge.
Yeah.
And then, and then the underlying document is, it was the twenty-seventeen IMA, which I do not promise, but that's another issue altogether.
And that's the, that's the next document that we do have to amend, that Mike's been working on. Uh, but this one, it was the more recent one, that this is to bring Clayton into the mix, because they have twelve or fourteen houses they're putting on the system. So this has got an additional wheeling charge, uh, of ten cents per thousand gallons for Otter Street Water District. And the original wheeling charge of forty-seven cents per thousand gallons for Route Twelve.
But, which includes, that forty-seven includes the, the wheeling charge, the ten cent wheeling charge for Route Twelve.
Yep.
And since we, we only care about the Town of Alexandria, if Orleans had a similar concern, that's up to them.
Yeah. So if everybody's okay with this amended IMA, I need a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mike.
How's that?
Second by John. Any further discussion?
Just a question, is the yellow all new language, or what, what's the yellow highlighted?
I think it, right, yes.
I just wondered what, what's the significance of the yellow highlighted?
New language.
Must be, I.
That's the amended.
Okay.
Yep. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, none. Advertise for water committee volunteers. This was something that Sandy's been talking about and wanting to do. Uh, discussion on it.
Well, that's something, you know, I think you and I talked about it, and Sandy gotta remind herself, um, if you read the, uh, I think it's a Route Twelve sewer, and it said, they actually have specific language in their order, and it said, it makes reference to a committee. So we, we kinda talked about that for all of, all the various districts we have. But I think it'd be a really good idea to have at least one person that, you know, you know, in each one of these districts that doesn't come with a, with some baggage or anything like that, that would, uh, you know, for a whole bunch of different good reasons, but one of them, like, would be a good one, so like, people understand what it is, we're kinda talking about, maybe we could talk to the friends and neighbors and kind of spread that information out, and maybe even help us with bringing some stuff in here. Because the Town of Alexandria acts on behalf of these districts, even though all of us have places within these districts.
So a person from each district?
Right. And, and I'm thinking at least one. Now, see, like Redwood, you have the Hamlet, which is kinda unique, where it's all, then you got this section of Route Twenty-Six, where it says a whole different kinda, those people have different concerns. So probably a good round two there, or, or at least two, you know?
Yep, yep.
How many do you want on the committee? Is that something that?
I don't think that's been decided.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you wanna advertise for it?
How, to get as much interest as possible. I feel, you know, if advertising wouldn't get interest, that'd be a good way to go.
We put something in with water bills?
That would be a good thing, too. That, that, that's actually a real good idea, because then it definitely gets to those folks. And July first is the beginning of the next billing period. Yeah, I think that's even a better idea.
So why don't we put a, a small memo together of what we wanna do, and, and how we want people to contact us if they're interested?
Yep, that's a, that's a great idea.
Okay. Okay. Town of Alexandria, just, uh, Town of Alexandria Court is open for small claims and civil matters as of five-twenty. COVID nineteen screening and precautions are fully enforced. I think you guys will see a, uh, paper I put in front of you that has nine different things that we had to do, uh, in order to satisfy the judicial people in Syracuse, in order to open up the courts. Dave and Dave Corrite, George Shaver, myself, and the court clerks have worked on this. I think we have everything covered. I know that Jocelyn today was waiting for, uh, she has submitted this plan to them, and I don't think she had heard back from them yet. But I sent you all an email that had the, had the different things that we had done. Uh, required signage, easel with directives, delineates, separated doorway, provide mask gloves and hand sanitizer to everybody. Uh, provide directions to the court clerk's office. You'll see all the tape on the floor out there. Delineation of six-foot spacing, and place chairs in the foyer and back hallway, six feet apart. We've installed acrylic barriers on the two court clerk's doorways, and we've installed a, not to do with this, but we've also put a acrylic barrier on Jesse's window there. Um, and the court facilities will be regularly sanitized. They all have a lot of hand sanitizer and spray sanitizer that they're keeping things clean with, as Jesse is doing the same, so. Uh, that's just to give you an update on what's going on there. There's been no date set for the court's reopening. That's to be determined later. Hearing date for the local laws, we have two local laws here, right, Bob? What do we have to do? Don't I have to?
Each of the local laws has to be introduced, and once they're introduced and seconded, then you need to settle a public hearing for each.
Okay, so we have local law one of two thousand twenty, and local law establishing the elective office of Alexandria town clerk, and establishing the appointed office of the Alexandria town clerk. So we introduce that at this time?
Someone needs to introduce it, and then it's seconded, and then you make a motion for a public hearing, uh, I think it do, do you need, what you told?
I'll make that motion.
Motion for the public hearing?
No, no.
No, for the local law.
Oh, to introduce it? Yep. Motion by Ron, second. By Mike. Is that all in favor of discussion deal? All of, just, just a, yes.
All they did was introduce and second the local law. Now you need, you need a motion to schedule the public hearing.
So we get, just had a motion to introduce it now, a motion by Ron to schedule the public hearing?
Yes.
Second by Mike.
For when?
Set the date of the twenty-sixth.
June, the June meeting?
Yes.
June twenty-fourth?
Wednesday, June twenty-fourth, I'm sorry.
Yep, what time?
What, five fifteen, like?
We got five fifteen for this other one.
Okay.
That was the law, and so we do the same.
Or do five thirty?
I do five, I do five thirty, yeah.
Five thirty?
Yeah.
Okay. So a motion and second?
Motion and second, discuss a public hearing, and then you vote on the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, none. Now we have local law number two, two thousand twenty, a local law establishing abolishing the elective office of Town of Alexandria Town Highway Superintendent and establishing the appointed office of Town Highway Superintendent.
I'll make that motion.
Make a motion to adopt the.
Introducing the law, introducing the law.
Local law. Second.
How's that?
By John. Now we need a motion to set the public hearing date.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing date as June twenty-fourth at, uh, five thirty.
Motion by Ron to set that public hearing date.
How's that?
June twenty-fourth at five thirty, second by John. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, none. Town of Alexandria reception employees will be working in town office and publicly schedule appointments via the phone number for the town is at three-one-five-four-eight-two-nine-five-one-nine, or email to appropriate department. Email addresses as per our town webpage. We just wanted to make that announcement. The next one, a conference call with the New York State Comptroller's Special District Legal Department, summary is scheduled for work session. So Bob and I had a conference call with the attorney for the comptroller's office, and he's the attorney that specializes in special districts.
Right.
And it was probably an hour conference call, forty-five minutes.
At least, yeah.
Yeah. And I gave Mike the tape of it, and he's listened to it, and it's, Mike agrees with me. I'm, I think I am more confused.
I, I thought we had it, but apparently we don't.
Well, and I, I've gone ahead and looked up all the statutes you alluded to, so I've got all that stuff. Uh, I tried, and I read through them, but it's.
So Bob, I'm, I'm more confused than I was before the conference call. And what I'm confused about is he kept saying that the only things that we can deal with for these charges of, of ad valorem's or benefit assessments are only if they were in our original document creation. We only have benefit assessment in one original document creation of, of seven.
Yeah.
Or six. We have no ad valorem at any document.
Right, which means all of your O and M and everything is charged through rates. Everything, okay? Which means if they're not hooked up, they don't pay me. So, I, I mean, step back a minute. When, when you go to set it up, if you're going to charge everybody in that area for building the system, you can do it one of two ways. You can figure out the cost, add it to their taxes as a tax, ad valorem tax, or you can determine whether there's some benefit assessment that you're gonna build in quarterly for, okay? Otherwise, the only charge that you can impose, a charge is that you're imposing on front persons who are actually hooked up and using the water, we're talking water. And all charges can be included in the water, O and M and everything.
And, and you can bill that on a quarterly basis.
You bill it into rates, you just bill it in, yeah.
But isn't that contrary to what the comptroller's office also told us?
No, what, what they told us was that, that was, was that we were doing, what, EDU charges against persons?
No, no, we were, we were.
There are other charges that were not used, like actual saved water. No, any other charges, O and M, uh, debt, you know, capital, they said that had to be on an annual basis. Only usage could be on quarterly basis.
Right, but what we're finding out is, because I was on that conversation with you, what we're finding out is, that is true, but it has to be in the original documentation.
I know.
When, and that.
But it sounds like two different, you know, the same group, but two different.
But they're, they're both saying the same thing, as far as who can be charged and who can't be charged.
Well, I'm talking about how.
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 Bob, let me go back and clarify something. Did you just say that there is, there is a way that we can build people that are not hooked up?
No, I didn't say that.
There's no way we can build people that are not hooked up?
Unless it's in the original documentation.
It's in the original documentation.
So we can't.
Oh, well, and the, we, only the. But what he really said, if I, I'm sorry, what I understood him to say was, is, is you look at whether you're gonna do ad valorem or, or, um, benefit assessment, you have to look to see which was used when it was originally set up. What you're telling me is neither one was, right?
Well, the Redwood Water District actually.
Redwood has benefit assessment.
Yeah. And they spell it out exactly what it is. It's, it's, it's.
So much.
Based on road frontage.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and it happened, it, it started out as one fee, and then the town board, over time, changed the fee. But it was the same method, okay, road frontage, yeah.
But it sounds like the ability to do it has to be in that original documentation.
Yeah, I didn't hear that.
Bob, let me ask you another question here.
Sure.
I have some notes that I took during that, that deal, and one of the things, and I asked him this again, is that a benefit assessment has to have at least two components. One of the components can be tied to the assessment, the second component can be tied to something else, and he used an example of footage. Okay, frontage, footage. And I, so I said to him, I said, it can't just be based on assessment. He said, no, it has to have a second component.
I didn't remember that, but if you recorded it, I'd like to hear it again. I mean, I'd be glad to hear it. be glad to hear it.
That's why, that's why I'm thinking right now, before we set up a work session, that before we go through all the stuff that you dug up of all the case histories and all the opinions that he told us about, with every one of them had a number tied to it.
I know, I looked them all up.
Is that we re-clearify some things via email.
That's not a problem.
Before we all get together and don't know, because I don't have a solid armor out, you know?
Well, I'd like to listen, and if you recorded it, I'd like to listen to it again. I mean, you know.
Sandy has it, but, but this, and I remember I had this conversation with, with the comptroller's here over the winter and this is Redwood ordinance, it's benefit assessment, vacant parcels and it's like actually called up along the transmission line with no lateral for connection. So that's basically going up Route 26.
Right.
Okay? So then, then the question came up, what happens if the water line's on this side of the road, but not on that side of the road?
Mm-hmm.
You know, when they, because it specifically says transmission line.
Yeah.
So-
So that doesn't mean vacant parcels in the hamlet of Redwood?
No, no, no. This is a Redwood Water District goes from the village line all the way to Redwood. So this would apply to-
Yeah, but didn't you just say benefit assessment along the transmission line?
Yes.
That doesn't-
But that's, I'm just, I'm just-
Does the transmission line go all the way to the, to recent?
Yeah.
So everybody's-
And it goes down, a transmission line is the line that goes down every street in Redwood?
Well, see that, yes. But see, that's one of the things too, like my understanding of going, when I was at school and I'm like transmission lines, as it, you know, as opposed to say a lateral, you know, I've ever talked to the comptroller's folks, it's transmission line is just, you know, the, the common line.
The main pipe.
A lateral would be the, any line that's on that to somebody's house.
Or the, or the transmission line would be the, the main pipe to Redwood and then you have distribution lines in the hamlet and then lateral line.
But they don't talk about distribution.
So, so my question is distribution lines. You've got vacant parcels on distribution lines.
Right.
Does that fit into what he just read?
I don't know.
Transmission line?
I-
I don't know what a distribution line is, but-
In other words, the lines that go down every street in Redwood?
Those are distribution lines.
Right.
Are they transmission lines?
Well, that's a, that's a question that the, the comptroller's asked over and over again. And-
The lateral seems to be clear.
What did they say, what did they say?
What did they say? They were, well, they're just a bunch of towns.
They're a kind of, right, right.
You know, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, transmission is, you know, the common wire.
That's what I-
I would say so.
And I would agree with that.
Thank, well, write that down. But, but a lateral is coming off of that, a common line to somebody's specific house.
I would say, I would say if the distribution line went down your street.
Well, they never say distribution.
I understand that, but, but you're benefited by that.
Right.
Whether you hook up or not.
Right.
So, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't get hung up on whether something's transmission like between here and the hamlet, right?
Basically definition of district.
Their problem is-
Districts should have to be benefited.
Well, you're right. They have to define it that way. If they defined it here by road frontage and all that.
Right, but what happens if the, if the line is on one side of the road and you're hoping probably-
They're still talking about transmission lines. They don't run them down both sides of the road.
I know, but I'm just, I'm, yeah. What is the intent of this crazy document?
Either side of the road. Either side of the road.
Okay, I, I think we gotta write Sean a email.
All right, I don't mind doing that, but I, I don't know how it can be either side of the road.
I mean, we don't want to interpret this without his advice too.
And the district was promoted by the comptroller, right? It's just a formation.
Now, this is, this is the, the further twist on this, is Redwood Water District is, has, everybody has a single EDU and then they have this benefit assessment language in there. Otter Street, for example, and I think Route 12 is, is the same thing. They have EDUs for the water. And one of the categories they have is vacant parcel.
Right. I've been doing it for 35 years.
So, so, I guess that might be a backward way to include vacant parcels. It'll be vacant parcels. It doesn't say, uh, has to be along the road or transmission line. It just says vacant parcel. That's what their original document says.
Look, I just think that on a level, the comptroller's office landed here. It landed in any other town and the county has the same issue.
Yeah.
Okay? I mean, frankly, we just landed here, so.
I mean, it was tough to listen to them, but then, you know, you know, a lot of it was one way or to another, so.
Right. So you discount that EDU.
Yeah, and so, but I did, you know, it's like, I got, at the end of the conversation, I'm like, I know less than I knew when it started with. It was really messy.
That's why, that's why I got quiet on that call for 20 minutes because I was still trying to interpret the benefit and the ad valorem and I'm thinking, boy, where are we going with this? Because, you know, from my reading of these ordinances, I only saw the word benefit assessment on one ordinance. Of all problems, of all the issues we got?
Well, there are three ways you can charge, is how it started out. Ad valorem, benefit assessments, for town law 198, 3D, which is rates. Those are the three ways you can charge.
Can you charge somebody that's not hooked up by rates?
No. That's the point. So what you end up doing is you, you have increased rates.
Yep.
Everybody that is, that is actually hooked up.
That's right.
Pays more.
That's right.
They, and they, and they put the bill. Unless you have put in benefit assessments or unless you have done an ad valorem tax, that's how it works.
Well, how about for the, like, the one I did, Otter Street has a, an EDU specifically called out, a half of an EDU for vacant parcels. We can't do that.
Our, our auditors said you can't do that.
And, but that's what's, what's kind of crazy, but they're, but they're also saying you gotta go with the, the, the original document. So I'm calling out the original document.
What he said, what he said, what I heard him say was that you can only have something that is paid for by persons not hooked up by, at, at the warrant taxes or benefit assessments.
Well, you have both, right?
And I, I know you want to do EDU and vacant parcels too, but-
Right, but that, the part, uh, the EDU charge on vacant parcel could be considered as a assessment.
The comptroller pulls, we can't do that. They said we can't do it.
It's gotta be billed because those two build annually with your, it's actually a tax.
Right.
But unless it says that in here, we can't do it.
That, that's where our problem is.
Well, one thing, well, here's, here's-
Can you amend that?
I'm glad you asked that question because if it had never been established, I don't know whether we can now or not. And that's, and I don't know the answer to that. And that's, I don't know the answer to that. Okay? But what he said was, when it's established, you have to follow the way it was established. If it was never established, can we do it now? So my mind is an open question. I don't know.
That the money to the water.
See, I thought he, I thought he told me, because I specifically asked a couple of us, I thought he told me that you can't establish it now. Cannot.
Well, no, well, I, I remember your question and I think it was, can we, basically can we fix it now?
Yeah.
As opposed to can we establish it now, right? I would call those two different things.
But I, I've had some towns, not to say it's correct, but some towns that had originally had an EDU-based system of charging and changed it to a ad valorem based later, or a benefit assessment on the tax.
Yeah.
And they, I don't know what-
Well, we, I know that he asked that question more than once.
See, I see, I see what they're doing or where they're coming from on this, in a sense. And what I'm saying is that, what they're saying is that you create this district, you form this, you, you set all these rules. You, the game is, is on. You can't change the rules now.
Right, but if there were no rules to begin with.
Well, then you get me.
Maybe you can't.
Isn't, a lot of the stuff that's in these ordinances is kind of tied to the folks we borrow the money from.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And that, I think-
Yes, that's all based on it, yeah.
So, so unless we, unless the folks we borrow the money from were okay with changing the rules, which I don't even know if that makes any difference.
Well, and, and here's the thing, as you know, back when we set these up, we went and borrowed an ordinance from another township that we thought did it right and followed that and it, it has just been one of these all around the whole county. And I'm just picking on our county. It's all around the whole state.
Does this sound just like the original Redwood Silver District? The same problem there?
Same thing.
Totally.
Same thing.
It's a problem we've had with every water.
And we haven't settled there yet either, really.
But it was-
It hasn't settled there either, really.
No, no.
It won't be settled here.
Not only that, but-
The comptroller tells us wrong, they want to fix it.
But I think, I, if we never, if we never did either, we, I'd call and say, you know what? We did what you asked. We went back to each ordinance to see how they were set up and we found out neither. Can we establish one now? It's different than asking, can we change it?
Well, how about, looking at it from kind of a, a really odd way, what happens if these things were not correct from day one? There was a problem with them from day one. So we aren't really fixing it. We're actually making a, a correct document.
Every time I brought that up-
Every time he brought them up, he said, "We can't do it."
I brought that up a bunch of times and he basically said-
Well, what it comes down to, and I, I'm going to come back to this again, it comes back to-
As I said, we didn't do it right. Can we fix it?
Well-
If it's, he said, "Not if it's not an original document."
Well, how about, how about this one? This, say like, you know, well, most of these they're like 38 or 30 plus years of a term for borrowing the money. What happens if we, well, hopefully we'll all be around that, but I mean, when the water gets, when the bills get off, paid off and it's got, can you change it then? Well, the reason why I say that is we, we had Kerry Tuttle come here from, from Dank and they did a bunch of work up in Tupper Lake. And at one time they had like, well, the, the village of Tupper Lake had like, like 30 or some crazy large number of water districts. And what it was, is every time they, they want to go down a, a street, they would borrow enough money to go down that street. And then, and various amounts of money and then the money would get paid off. It's all, a, a large number of them had no debt anymore. So they just got absorbed into some, some bigger districts.
But that's why I kept asking the question, if, if everything's paid off and somebody else then finally hops on, how do they catch up? Or should they catch up? I kept asking that question. How's, because how is it fair? If everybody else paid for it?
Yeah.
You know?
I think there's, I think we've got three or four.
Wheeling.
I think we've got three or four really good questions here.
Three outside user groups, it's why you didn't make up for it.
Well, how about, now, this is the, the, the elephant in the room is, I think what is October?
Is what?
October, we're supposed to have this all fixed. According to the comptroller.
Yeah, but that was our corrective action plan letter to the, to, to him, to the comptroller. We can, I mean, we're working on it as much as we can and if we have to write them and tell them we're going to be another 30 days, then so be it, right Bob?
Well, I, let's face it, it's as clear as mud. And I'd like to have them show me the perfect water ordinance. If you do this, you guys are fine. I didn't hear that.
No.
You hear that?
No, they don't, and, and it's the same thing that John and I dealt with, with the people in Syracuse. Every time we wanted them to tell us exactly what, what it was supposed to be.
Yeah.
We didn't get answers, did we John?
Send somebody up here to know and say, okay, let's go through this. We'll do it. This is how you're going to do it.
Right. I mean, you gotta believe that a township like the town of Salina or somebody's pretty sophisticated has a really good water ordinance. Well, show it to us. Maybe we should write the town of Salina and ask them.
Yeah.
I don't know. Making that up, I'm just picking this up.
I don't think that town that we don't, that we buy it.
Well, I, I think we've got, we got four or five very good questions here.
Yeah.
Maybe a couple more. I think we need to, to write him.
I don't like following up with them.
And just, just-
Interesting.
I don't have any answers from what, after all that.
No. I was hopeful that that conversation was, and it. Were, were we not asking the questions? I thought we were. I thought, I, you saw the questions in print before they went out. I thought they were-
And we followed right down through that outline that Bob put together.
Yeah, I, I thought we were close.
I'm serious, I thought we were close.
No.
I agree.
He went through each one and if you have a tape of it, again, I'd love to hear it, so.
Well, I think we'll have some emails amongst us, go back and forth and let's come up with questions and whether you want to do it. I don't, I don't like the deal on the phone and the reason I don't is because I like to have the answers in black and white.
No, I think they don't like to put the answers in black and white.
You know, and Mike, you listened to that tape. That tape is confusing. The discussion is, you know, and I hated to keep going back and asking this guy the same question, which I did about three times about this benefit.
Is this a fair question?
And-
But is there any way we could get, either we go down and actually sit down with them or, or they come up here in any way?
Well, you just said, we just go up there and say, oh, this is, say, okay.
I'd rather see it in writing.
Well, I mean, we also get it.
Well, sit down and get it written.
I'd rather, I'd, I'd rather-
A lot of, you know, you sit across the table with somebody, you're talking and then you may have a question that you have it written down, but you, it kind of dawns on you based on your, you know, series of, you know, conversation.
I'd rather see it in writing and I'd, I'd also like to see what you just said. And I'd like to see a couple ordinances that they think are very close to being perfect.
Well, here's the thing, if you're doing zoning, you know, you can get model zoning ordinances.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? If you're doing, you know, things like that, they'll give you model ordinances.
But didn't we, how did we already done that? That's what we got right here?
It's a model already.
God wants somebody else, you know?
I, I just think we happen to be the town that they grant. I just think we could just easily have found 10 other towns in a hundred mile radius that have the same problem.
So should, should, should the structure of either ad valorem or EDUs, is, is that related in any way to the ordinance or to your original district formation documents?
The original district formation documents.
So it has nothing to do with your water use law or your sewer use law ordinance?
District formation documents.
It's the original district first, which is basically a map planery board and then the documents that the attorneys who have formed the district.
Right, right.
Prepares.
Here's the results of the search.
Wish I had, I know, I have more questions than answers. I did find that you can have yourself an ambulance special. You asked about that.
Well, I think we, my thoughts are we hash this around up between Bob and us and come up with two questions on paper for-
Oh, what questions?
For Sean and shoot those at him.
He seemed receptive to that, to those questions about that. He was, I think he was trying to be helpful.
Did they ever give us written answers to the questions we've already given them?
They won't. They won't.
So what, any other additional questions? Are they gonna, are they gonna give us answers to them?
Well, schedule-
No, so I mean, what if I-
They won't respond, but you know. Schedule another phone call.
Did you give him a, a, to our meeting so that he could log in and listen to us?
Is that-
No, I take a, go ahead.
Is that recording in electronic form or is it, so, do, do you have that memory stick?
At home.
Recording of that phone call?
At home you do.
Yeah, I didn't bring it.
Okay, well, Bob would like, can you email to me or whatever, if it's possible?
I don't know. I couldn't get my computer to-
I, I have it on my computer, but it's, I, I downloaded those off those sticks. I have a couple of my own, but their files are so enormous.
Whatever, so.
See Jesse, and I'm worried that that-
Can I have a memory stick on you?
I went and got that because I was in a real, I wanted to record this thing. So I went and got that memory stick from your desk. It's the only one I could find.
Yep.
And that had, I think that's got meeting minutes on.
Yeah, it does. It does. See, all of them are done.
Have they been transcribed to?
Yeah, they've been transcribed. The only one that I think is not is the, um, May 3rd.
But it should be on the laptop.
I know how to do it.
Yeah.
From this.
Yeah.
Yeah, what I did about five minutes into the deal is I got the memory stick there, and I got my phone down, kinda do it, what I finally did is I got Scotch tape, and I sta- taped that memory stick right to my phone, right to where the.
I thought I heard you snoring.
Told you I was quiet, so, and I wasn't getting any answers, but, so, we'll, we'll go back and forth, we'll email this thing, and we'll see what Sandy thinks of it after she listens to it for an hour.
If I can get the, the open.
But, uh, the only thing, I wanna go back, we don't have any budget transfers, and I don't have the, uh, ABS did not send me the last, the past contract that shows that while we're having this rate increase, and I know we have until July to deal with it, so, uh, those two things I will, well, we have no budget transfers, but I'll find out more about this ABS thing. The ABS, the rates for our internet and service that they do is going up about two hundred and thirty dollars a month, it worked out to three thousand fifty dollars. It was, it's going from five something to seven. So, I mean, do we go look at another company?
Is there another company?
That's my question. These, in my opinion, these guys do a good job, in my opinion, whenever we have problems and we have issues, we call them, they do a pretty good job of taking care of us, don't you think, Jesse?
Well, I agree.
Yeah.
How long has this been in place? How long have we been paying the five hundred or something?
Yeah, that's.
Couple of years.
Couple of years?
I guess.
They, I'm, I'm just thinking, well, I'd like to hear what their rationale is for that percentage.
Well, that's why I wanted the old contract in this contract and see what deserves.
Okay.
But that's a good point, too, if it, you know, Redwood Sewer's a good example, it just breaks into offer too long, and then all of a sudden they go up a lot.
Right, and the reason is, it hasn't been up for a long.
A long time.
Well, I'm sure what's going on with cyber security and cyber hacking and all this stuff, I don't know if you guys have been reading about these towns, have you been reading about the school systems that have been hacked and then ransomed them?
But maybe they're offering more services that, you know.
It's, it's, that stuff's starting to happen a lot more, you know, that's scary.
Well, I had my car hacked for the second time in about five or six years.
I wonder how much they want for a water district?
Sandy, the only thing that, uh, we did talk briefly about that I wanted to ask you about was the water, water committee volunteers, and one of the suggestions we had was to put a letter in the next bill, and a memo that explains what we wanna do. We wanna create a committee, we'd like to have representatives from each water district on a committee, I wa- I was asked how many people do we want on this committee, I don't know that we have an answer for that question yet. Um, you know, we have five water districts, so do we want, we're gonna probably have a board member or two in there, uh, and that was kind of our thought, we'll put a memo together and put it in the next bill.
I think that's a good idea, because that would, that would actually hit every person in the district, you wouldn't be paying extra money because you're already mailing them something. I mean, it would be nice if we could get the committee together before the, because the billing just went out, so it, that means another three months down the road, so that.
It'll be July, so that's.
Is July already?
About forty-five days.
Is there another one already? Yeah.
So that was, uh, that was the deal there, I don't think we have anything else. Bob, do you have anything?
I should put it in paper, but not everybody gets it, they don't.
No.
Also, like me, they read it three weeks later.
Anybody have anything else? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Talking about wheeling charges or?
No, no, no executive session.
Talk about.
Nothing, nothing.
No executive session?
No.
Okay.
Now, I don't have one, and Bob doesn't have one, anybody else have anything? Um, next meeting, do we close it, do we close this, or do we adjourn it? Our next meeting is the normal meeting, which we talked was June twenty-fourth. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess, motion.
Are we gonna go a month without meeting?
No, no.
No, no.
Nah, we'll, it's possible, no worries.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ron, second. Second by Sandy, any discussion on adjournment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, none.